Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to the committee meeting this morning. Everybody here is on virtual, everybody is here in the boardroom. We don't have much on there today. We got a lot of motions to go over. But other than that, we don't have too long of agenda this morning. We will have a public comment before the reading starts about the stuff that are on the agenda. Edit it if you want by the public comment. Or the items that if you just want to adjust the board, we do that at the end of the meeting. I'll call the meeting order this morning. We have prayer by Mr. Goodchild this morning. I'll lead the presence of allegiance. Then we'll have the rule call by Madam Clerk 20.
Dear God, thank you for letting us gather here today and please bless us with some wisdom to make decisions for our constituents this morning. Please look out for all of our first responders that we have in our, in our state, in our country, in our county. Please look out for all the, all the other federal services that we have that are protecting us, including armed forces. And, please help us negotiate some good deals this week with other countries and try to put people at ease. Thank you for this great country we live in, dear God, and thank you for bringing us all here today. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call these.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Commissioner Goodchild.
Here.
Commissioner Barbara.
Here.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
You have a quorum. You may proceed.
Thank you. First thing on the agenda or the adoption of the agenda? Do we have anything on the agenda we need to add this morning? Anything needs to be added to the agenda this morning? If not, we'll take a motion to adopt it. I make the motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Or the move by Commissioner Cook, support by Commissioner Cook, to adopt the agenda as presented. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all fairies say aye.
Aye.
Adoption of agenda has passed. Move on to the action on the previous minutes. Everybody had a chance to go over the minutes? They do it, they're satisfied, we'll take a motion to approve.
Make a motion to move to adopt the meeting minutes from the March 27, 2025 regular meeting. Or?
The move by Commissioner Cook, support by Commissioner Cook, to move to adopt the meeting minutes from the March 27, 2025 regular meeting. Any more discussion? Hearing none, the minutes have been approved also. This time we got a brief, brief public comment period for anything on the agenda. Anybody want to adjust the board of anything on the agenda this morning?
Good morning, commissioners. I just have a quick clarification. I'm glad that Chairman Kleinsmith is here because we were emailing and I, I'm not for sure I understood his response. So you're going to be looking at filling three vacant positions after potentially vacating two of those seats. The third seat that I'm showing Chairman Vaughn is held by you. My understanding is that you held a dual role. You held a voting member seat and then you held a liaison seat as a commissioner. So are we splitting those and we're going to be appointing that? Can I just clarify that before we get into that? Or we can clarify it, we can clarify it during that. I just wanted to let you know that I did have that question before we got to that matter.
Well, me being a voting member, really we're down two vacancies is what you're saying.
That's my records. That would be correct. So.
So.
And we can pause. I just wanted you to, I mean, we can discuss when we get to that matter. I just, I didn't want the motion to go quickly. I'd rather discuss it ahead of time so we can do it now or we can do it when we get into there. So.
We can clarify right now, I think.
Okay.
Okay.
So, hello, everyone.
Hello.
So, um, so my understanding, looking at the, at the bylaws and looking at the state law is that there's seven positions that are voted on by the, Board of Commissioners for the Parks Board. And one of those is, is one of the commissioners and then there's six other spots as well. That's the way that I read the bylaws and the state law. State law actually says you can have up to three commissioners, but we need one at least. And we have six other positions. That's the way that I read it. So I don't, I don't know where the kind of the dual position kind of came from. From my viewpoint, we have like seven members that we need on the board and then we have, state law also has three, I guess we call them ex officio positions as well. And the, and our bylaws say that when we have vacancies that we can elevate those people to be voting members. So looking at the bylaws and looking at the state law, my understanding is that we need to have a board of seven members and then we have three additional liaisons. I'm not sure how it works. Say if you had filled some positions because I don't know if you get two votes or how does that?
So, so Madam Clerk, he, he's, he's using all the liaisons from like the parks, I mean, from the old, the, drain commissioner as not members. Are they not members or are they, are they not voting members? I read.
My understanding from Mr. McKay was they were liaisons, not voting members.
Okay, so.
But I, I've not looked at those bylaws as probably as closely as Michael. So what I'm showing is I have our three, which is our drain commissioner, a planning commission member, and then a road commission member. Those are the three liaisons and I am showing those filled. Then I am showing Ms. Barrios, Mr. Newby, who I believe is one of the ones that we're asking to remove, Mr. Putnam, Mr. Norman, who's the second one we're being asked to remove, Michael, and then Chairman yourself. But I just have you as six, seven, and I believe that that was from Mr. McKay that in order for you to be able to be a voting member, that as a commissioner liaison you were not, but we, they wanted you to be a voting member. Now, maybe that was interpreted incorrectly back then and I just wanted to clarify before we did that.
According to what I've looked at with, with the bylaws, the state law says that the other three liaisons are, are members. The, the bylaws that we have written says that they are non-voting members and they have to be elevated. So that's what, our bylaw for the Parks Recreation. But looking at the bylaws also, it looks like the commissioner is one of the seven members of, of the board. So it's written that way.
You want seven members of the board plus the three liaisons.
Okay, so with that clarification, then we would have the three if there, if you are considered that seventh member as the chairman and would still retain voting rights.
Yes.
That was, I just didn't want you to give up your voting rights if you didn't, if that wasn't the understanding. So.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of, it's kind of written that way. So.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Public comment. Any more, anybody else want to adjust the board this morning? On the agenda items? Seeing none, that's record show that public comment was offered and we had one to split. Madam Clerk, do you want to debate? And with that being said, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do you have anything on the consent agenda?
No, no consent agenda, Chairman, but you do have some minutes to approve.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that consent agenda meetings from the April minutes from the April 7, 2025, the whole meeting be adopted. Or?
The move by Commissioner Cook, support by Commissioner Lewis, the move that the consent agenda demands from the April 7, 2025, to make the whole meeting be adopted. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all fairies say aye.
Aye. Aye.
That approved. Move on to new business. Bright Speed Grant Application Support, Commissioner Cook.
On March 25th, I received an email from a provider for high speed internet wanting me as a commissioner, and I don't know if the other commissioners got it, like a letter of support. So I forwarded it to Ian and he said he'd like to put it on the agenda. And I'm not turning it over to him.
What I'm looking for is for the board's permission to craft a blanket response for these vendors that are asking for this. What BEAT is, is a rural development grant that was put in by the previous presidential administration for $74 billion. And local ISPs, internet service providers will compete for those dollars to bring fiber optic projects to rural unserved areas. And the new administration that's being realigned and how that's being dispersed. So there's a big grab right now before everybody gets the rules changed on them of what's going to happen. So that's why you're getting these letters. While we certainly encourage, I believe we encourage, and I'm speaking and almost on behalf of you, that we, we do want broadband brought into our county. We, we do want to see expansion of that. However, playing favoritism and showing support of one business over the other is not something we want to do. And by remaining fair and impartial, I believe we're encouraging competition, which is only going to be better for our constituents. So I'd like permission from you guys to craft some sort of umbrella statement that we could reply to on behalf of you that we are not putting out letters of support for anybody and this is why, for the reasons that I had just given you. So looking for that directive from this board.
But sir, Chairman.
Yeah.
Certainly, uh, this is part and parcel to the one that I received. Was it Highland?
Yeah, we had a Highland, uh, same exact letter, same exact format. I believe this is given out by the BEAT group for not just County Board of Commissioners, but for anybody to put out a letter of support for them. And this is their form cookie cutter, well boilerplate that they send out. So we did receive one for Bright, or Highland. And we have responded in the same way of we do not wish to at this time. But in the future, we're going to receive more of these. I'd like to be able to respond to them on your behalf with your approved boilerplate language.
Any more questions for you?
Chairman, I think that what is, what you're asking for is that the authority to craft a letter to sort of get ahead of some of these. This may not be the last one. I, I don't know.
We're going to receive many more and, and you will receive them in your personal email inbox as you are a personal body that is listed online. So you're easy to find.
And I would recommend that we, based on board approval, proceed and allow Ian to craft this, draft this letter for said cause.
Is that your motion?
Oh, I was having a discussion, but I'll make that motion.
But you want to put on the consent agenda.
I'm working on a, I'm working on a motion.
Oh, okay. I thought. I think the clerk is crafting the motion, which you'll, Chairman, you'll read back to us or you'll ask her to read it back to us and we'll take it from there. And if there's a second, and then it'll be voted on. But if there's any further discussion, that was my thoughts. Uh, based on what Ian presented.
Now, the other people that's been here putting, if I wrap them, what's that? Are they doing what these people want to do?
Yeah, I can't speak on behalf of them. I don't know what, what their plans are in the future. But I know that the end is in sight for the current planning funding levels. So I believe that that's why we're seeing an influx of these letters. Um, before they had years and years to come to put these projects together, but now they only have a matter of months to put them together. Um, what their strategies are going forward, I can't, I can't speak to that. Uncertain at this time until we get a better idea of how the funding is going to be changed.
But they've already put a lot of hydraulics down in county, haven't they?
Oh, yeah. Miles and miles and miles.
This is a draft for you to consider. We can add or change. Approve Ian Lee, Chief Information Officer, to draft a letter on behalf of the Board of Commissioners to remain neutral as to what company provides rural broadband services to Tuscula County residents. The Board of Commissioners remains supportive of providing rural broadband services in general to Tuscula County residents. I was just trying to capture that you still want it and that you're supportive of it, just not as to which company is providing it. Ian, would you like anything else, language in there?
Sounds good to me.
Is that your motion, Mr. Birdwell?
That'll be my motion then.
I'll support it.
The move by Commissioner, by Russell, support by Commissioner Lewis, to support the motion that Madam Clerk just read.
And I can reread that. It's been moved and supported to approve Ian Lee, Chief Information Officer, to draft a letter on behalf of the Board of Commissioners to remain neutral as to what company provides rural broadband services to Tuscula County residents. The Board of Commissioners remains supportive of providing rural broadband services in general to Tuscula County residents.
Any more discussion? Thank you, Ian.
You're welcome.
Hearing none, all fairies say aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed. Move on into old business. That's all we got on the new business. The Parks and Recreation Commission requests for a quiet historical grant. You don't need to present it.
No.
Yeah, these are all.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the request from Michael Kleinsmith, Parks and Rec Chair, to apply for a historical grant for a sign at Vanderbilt Park with all appropriate signatures authorized.
Sport. It's been moved by Commissioner Cook, supported by Mr. Goodchild, to move to approve the request for Michael Kleinsmith, Parks and Recreation Chair. To apply for the historical grant for the sign at Vanderbilt Park with all appropriate signatures authorized. Any more discussions? Hearing none, all fairies say aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed. Number two. The Parks and Recreation Commission requests to remove two vacant members and advertise for three more vacant positions.
Any other questions?
Madam Clerk, is that motion still fine after our discussion?
Yes, I would, I think that that suits everything. Thanks for asking.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the request from Michael Kleinsmith, Parks and Recreation Chair, to remove Paul Newby and Donovan Norman from the Parks and Recreation Commission Board due to lack of activity and to authorize a county clerk to advertise for three vacant positions on the Parks and Recreation Commission Board.
Sport. The move by Commissioner Cook, support by Commissioner Goodchild, to move to approve the request for Michael Kleinsmith, Parks and Recreational Chair, to remove Paul Newby and Donovan Norman from the Parks and Recreation Commission Board due to lack of activity, to authorize the county clerk to advertise for three vacant positions on the Parks and Recreation Commission Board. Any more discussion on that? Hearing none, all fairies say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
And Chairman, if I need to spell up, we have received one applicant, um, in case that person, I think he has talked to one of you. He resides outside of Tuscula County, so per our board rules will not qualify. And I've already talked to him regarding that and I talked to Mr. Kleinsmith about that. So, um, we will advertise for the full three, but that's why he's not being presented to fill that. Even though I think he, because of what he does for work, I think he'd be a benefit, but so.
So you have to meet Tuscula County.
That is for your board rules.
Move on to number three, the Planning Commission Annual Report.
Chair, I move to approve and place on file the 2024 Planning Commission Annual Report as presented. Sport.
The move by Commissioner Lewis, support by Commissioner Cook, to move to approve the place on the 2024 Planning Commission Annual Report as presented. Any more discussion on that? Hearing none, all fairies say aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed. And we'll move on to the Equalization Report.
Chairman, move to approve and place on file the 2025 Equalization Report as presented.
Sport. The move by Commissioner, by Russell, support by Commissioner Goodchild, to move to approve and place out filed the 2025 Equalization Report as presented. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all fairies say aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed. Move on to number five, the presentation on the mosquito 2024 Annual Report.
Chairman, I move to approve and place on file the mosquito 2024 Annual Report as presented.
Sport. The move by Commissioner Cook, support by Commissioner Goodchild, to move to approve the place on file, mosquito 2024 Annual Report as presented. So any more discussion? Hearing none, all fairies say aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed. Move on to number six. The Sheriff's Request for New Optic Systems for the Sheriff's Office Firearms, Robert Baxter.
Mr. Chairman, I move that per the request of Robert Baxter, Under Sheriff, to approve the new optic system for Sheriff's Office Firearms to be approved for quote, number one Vance Law Enforcement in the amount of $40,987.50 over the time and training costs necessary for the new optic system be approved up to $11,022. Also authorize the transfer of funds in the, in the amount of $52,009.50 from line item 207-000-390-000 cover the cost of the firearms in the amount of $40,987.50 to line item 207-309-975000 and the cost of the training in the amount of $11,022 to line item 207-309-706000. All authorized signatures and budget amendment be approved as necessary.
I'll support that.
The move by Commissioner Lewis, support by Commissioner Cook, to move the per the request of Robert Baxter, Under Sheriff, to approve the new optic system for the Sheriff's Office Firearms be approved for quote, one Vance Law Enforcement in the amount of $40,987.50 over the time for training costs necessary for the new optic systems approved up to $11,022. Also authorize the transfer of fund balance in the amount of $52,000.009 that point five zero from line item 207-000-390-000 to cover the cost of the firearms in the amount of $40,987.50 to line item 207-309-975-000 and the cost of all the training in the amount of $11,022 to line item 207-309-706-000. All authorized signature and budget amendments are approved as necessary. Any more discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all fairies say aye.
Aye.
Move on down to number seven. On that, and then oh, Mr. Lewis had some questions for you guys.
I just have a couple of questions. Maybe John can clear this up. Um, is there a contract for this 5520 a year?
Yes, sir, there is.
Okay. Is there a clause in there where we can get out of this contract if it don't work? If, if this, for some reason?
I did not ask that question. But I can get you that answer.
And, and is this Chairman Vaughn's signature has to be on this or who signs for this contract?
It would be your prerogative, I guess, to tell me how you would like that proceeded with.
I think this is a great idea. I, I really do. I think it's, it's really needed for the county. But I think we need to find out if we're going to be stuck in this contract or not.
Well, if we want to get, we probably have to read, uh, of course, if we have the equipment without the contract, comes no good without the contract.
So the, my understanding in speaking with the Kurt Wolfenberger, who's my sales associate, is that, um, we can plug it into our networks or operate off of our Wi-Fi system. Uh, what we're actually paying for are the, uh, the four phones and, or the devices in the kit. And then we're actually paying for the priority service, uh, from both Verizon and FirstNet to get us that phone service. And then the configuration setup, testing, all that stuff.
You know, because, you don't know. I mean, hopefully we never have to use it. So you don't know.
That's true.
If, if it works or not, it's, you know, hopefully, uh, you don't have a, the service that would call to, to use it.
I'm just don't want the county to get into a contract that we can't get out of. If, you know, if we sign this, does that put us into something or? I guess a pleasure of the board, whatever they want to do. But I, I was just thinking about this and, and well, because it didn't say here. That's why I'm saying.
Yeah, that'd be something too, that probably five years on the road, say we had this for five years. There we had years that the board might take one, take a look at it, but, but you could, you never know.
Right. I mean, I, I hope we never have to use it.
Yeah.
It's nice to have, but Mr. Birdwell, what do you think about that?
Well, circling back, I think all contracts in the county that obligate the county and its funds have to be approved by the Board of Commissioners and signed by the Chair.
Okay.
So there's no one that could just authorize a contract outside the chair or the board with the, you know, of the commission. Setting that aside, do you have that contract with you?
I was only provided the quote at this time. If you would like a copy of the contract, they have offered that, uh, to draft it up and submit it.
Well, I think that's, um, just pausing here. I think that's, uh, we wouldn't want. Let me just read this.
Yes.
One's only going for a year, so it's only a one-year term.
It's correct. It's just annual contracts.
It's an annual contract.
Yes.
Annual legacy. Well, annual contract.
Well, and, and on the computer here, it says annual investment beginning in a two-year at 5520.
Correct, because the first year is covered with the purchase.
Okay.
So the first year would be 8,850. And then next year, the only recurring cost would be the 5520. Uh, the, the difference of 3,330 there that shows non-recurring, that's the initial setup and configuration.
So I guess the question is, do we as a board feel comfortable with moving without physically reading that contract?
Yeah.
I think that's where you was going to make a question.
Chairman, I was thinking, I mean, there may be a way around this. I'll defer to the clerk and and others on the board. Uh, you could craft a motion that would be contingent upon a year. In so many words, yearly renewal. Uh, with the terminate, with said termination clause, something like that.
So is the, the 8,000 is the first year of service and equipment, the second cost is the second year?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's in essence, to start with a two-year.
Correct.
And then I think that we can have language in there that says after the initial two-year term, um, that it be, you know, obviously, which it will be when you renew contracts, that the contract is renewed, reviewed prior to renewal at that point by the board.
Also with that, the Chair, the Chair would have the, Chair has to sign the contract for it to be effective. The point of the matter is that moving forward, but with a contingency along those lines, that at some point, the board, Chair, could review that to ensure that those terms, tenants are within that contract. Otherwise, they go, it's not approved.
So I think we should take out the second line or the last line and reword that. To, let's see.
The progress of future, future.
Yeah, and let's reword it to, because that's going to be the 5520 is the second year cost. And would it be paid out of the same line item?
Absolutely. Uh, 218334970.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any other questions, gentlemen?
Any other questions, Richard?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, um, removing that last sentence, I think it would be clearer to say the contract for year two will be at five thousand five hundred and twenty dollars to be paid from line item, and then that same line item. After the initial two years, contract to be reviewed prior to re-renewal. And then that'll bring the opportunity for it to come back. You can discuss how it's working, any changes that might need to be made. Any, if the cost is still valid, and then the, in two years, the board will be able to relook at that before renewal.
I'm good with that. Could you, could you read those things first?
I can, thank you. Um, move that per the request of John Ramirez, nine one one dispatch director to approve that the, is it Mavo?
Mivo.
Mivo, the Mivo kit be approved for a total first year investment of eight thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars with the use of fund balance from line item two one eight three three four nine seven zero 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 and authorize all necessary signatures. The contract for year two will be at five thousand five hundred and twenty dollars to be paid from line item two one eight three three four nine seven zero zero zero. After the initial two years, the contract is to be reviewed prior to renewal. To be reviewed by the director and the board, would that be sufficient? To be reviewed, and would that, that would clear that?
Absolutely.
By the director and the board prior to renewal.
Chairman, the only other thing, I, I want to make sure that the contract comes back to the board, to the board's review to satisfy that requirement and for the chairman. Chairman would decide it without the board's approval anyway, but that's a must.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We have authorize all necessary signatures. I can put after board review to authorize necessary signatures after.
I would prefer that.
After board review.
Specifically places a board review. Normally, when we get approached at, at a VOC meeting, normally you would have a contract uh, versus just a quote, because that's, that's, that's what binds the county. And that's the first thing that, you know, Commissioner Luce and others are going to ask, what are the terms of the contract? And typically, over the years, we look at the termination clause, legacy costs, that type of thing. So just for the future, for everyone who's listening in the county who might be presenting contracts to the board or quotes, that's all.
Would you like me to read that in full one more time, then, so for somebody that's, um, proposed, move that per the request of John Ramirez, nine one one dispatch director, to approve that the Mivo kit be approved for a total first year investment of eight thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars with the use of fund balance from line item two one eight three three four nine seven zero 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 and authorize all necessary signatures after board review of the contract. The contract for year two will be at five thousand five hundred and twenty dollars to be paid from line item two one eight three three four nine seven zero 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 zero. After the initial two years, contract to be reviewed by the director and the board prior to renewal.
All, all authorized signatures.
We have that earlier, yes, we do, thank you. Thank you for asking.
That's the motion.
Mr. Fish?
I'll support that.
Mr. Luce, thank you.
The move by Commissioner Cook, followed by Commissioner Luce.
And I can read it again?
Please.
Move that per the request of John Ramirez, nine one one dispatch director, to approve that the Mivo kit be be approved for a total first year investment of eight thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars with the use of fund balance from line item two one eight three three four nine seven zero 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 and authorize all necessary signatures after board review of the contract. The contract for year two will be at five thousand five hundred and twenty dollars to be paid from line item two one eight three three four nine seven zero zero zero. After the initial two years, the contract is to be reviewed by the director and the board prior to renewal.
There's the motion, is there more discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question for John, if you got a second, sorry. I know we were just talking about this a second ago, but, so. Just to clarify, I want to make sure before I decide to vote on this, because I, this is a hard decision for myself to make. Um, we don't have any, so it's like, if our building goes down, we don't have any sort of backup, anything? Like this is.
Correct.
So we have not, if, if, if that, if the, if the nine dispatch center goes down, loses power, generator doesn't work too, you know, all the, the, the fails, we have nothing, we can't call anybody.
Correct.
We can't, so we can't send our calls over to another dispatch center.
So we have to have a contingency plan for the calls to be redirected, that's provided by state law and legislature.
Yeah.
Those calls, um, are now currently being transferred to Sanlack County.
Yeah.
Who, um, challenges that all dispatch center space is they're understaffed. They don't use the same, the same CAD, uh, computer aided dispatch to process those calls that we do. Nor do they have the state operating, uh, radio system that we have, the eight hundred megahertz radio, they have their own uh, separate radio system that they maintain, so they have no capability to speak with our first responders in Tuscola County. Um, so yes, you, you could call nine one one and still get a dispatcher and, you know, they, they do the emergency interrogation, if you will, find out what's going on, where it's going on. Uh, but then they would be challenged with actually getting a hold of police, fire, or EMS to get that help to you.
Okay, so there's no way like our, our officers could communicate with their officers through their dispatch?
There is not. And the sheriff can speak on that, uh, actually he's left. He's had interviews this morning, uh, but emergency manager Anderson can definitely talk about the interoperability challenges that we face in the thumb in particular.
Okay.
Um, just for example, our K nine officers, um, part of their contract that you're aware of, they have to service all of region three, um, including the state, so at any given time, our two K nine officers have Genesee County, Saginaw County, Lapeer County, all programmed into their mobile radios. And some of those are encrypted, so they have to go along and get encryption for their radios. But not every officer has that. Uh, Huron and Sanlack County are two of, I believe, six counties in the entire state of Michigan that are not on the state operating radio system. Uh, Huron County, I just spoke with the fire chief out of Harbor Beach, they're looking at it, um, to see what kind of cost that will be to them. Um, so yeah, we definitely face interoperability challenges currently with the nine one one systems.
So is there any way we can change our, our plan to use us a different county, not Sanlack County?
That would require, sure, that would require action on the Great Lakes, um, Bay Consortium. Uh, because we do not run our own, our own phone system nor our nine one one system. We are just merely users that has a voice at a table of eleven counties. Um, so I can propose that to them. Um, it's something I've certainly wanted to do because Huron and Lapeer do use the same CAD for now. Uh, and we are very similar in operations.
Okay, yeah, I just feel like, but who makes, who makes your, your emergency plan for you're going to get, who you're going to talk to?
As far as.
Sorry if I'm taking up a lot.
No, no, it's fine, as far as which part.
Dispatch center goes down. Who creates the plan to reconcile that problem?
Uh, that would be you as board of commissioners.
Okay, okay, so can we, so we, would you, do we not have authorization or something to use another county other than Sanlack County dispatch?
Again, that's decided through the Great Lakes Bay Consortium because of where, who purchased the equipment and where that equipment is located. So our hub is Bay County, who then feeds off of Midland County. We feed Sanlack and Huron.
Okay, so within that, that's part of the link.
Yeah, it's, it's a matter of redundancy for the agencies involved. Um, and those are decisions that I do not have control over. Uh, but again, with state nine one one committees and legislatures, uh, please keep in mind that they only care about the nine one one portion, the citizen having a, a call service, if you will, to answer that call for emergencies. They don't necessarily focus on actually the, excuse me, getting dry, the help getting to the person.
Okay. So if, if we, if we changed our, some equipment that our officers had so that we could communicate with their dispatch, would that solve the problem?
That would be very expensive.
Okay.
Uh, we're talking, thank you, we're talking, um, either us purchasing radios for them to talk on or speak on our system, which we can't afford radios for our own first responders.
Buy radios for somebody else, yeah.
Right, and then, um, the other option would be to buy us radios on their radio system. Although it would be cheaper because it's not eight hundred megahertz, it's UHF. Steve Black, my backup's leaving the hair.
You need to run everybody out of here, guys.
Uh, our current radios for the, um, APX six thousand sixty five hundreds, those run between six and ten thousand dollars apiece. Uh, I believe you can get a UHF radio for roughly half that. But then again, you're talking about outfitting police, fire, and EMS.
Yeah.
So our, our options are extremely limited.
Okay. Um, so what, and one more thing, what happens if Sanlack County gets some disaster? We go down, Sanlack County goes down, what's our, what's going on there?
God help us.
We have nothing.
We have nothing.
Okay.
Which is what we experienced with thirteen counties in the, in northern Michigan currently. Their antennas went down, they had no nine one one services, they had, they had nothing.
Okay, so there's no, uh, do, we have no way to reach out to another dispatch center at all, or move anything over to?
So we try and interconnect, right? We try and build redundant communication networks. I don't know who Sanlack, who their backup is, I believe only based upon limited conversations with their director is that it's, um, St. Clair County.
Okay.
Um, but I, I can reach out to whoever you would like to, to speak with them.
That's okay, I mean, would this thing solve that problem if both centers went down? Would, can we still talk to somebody who was screwed?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's, that's all I got.
And that's the whole, that's the whole idea of getting this over here is, if we have this, we can still communicate.
Correct, and this is why, excuse me again, this is why I didn't ever ask for a brick and mortar touch, uh, backup dispatch center. I wanted something that can be mobile. Uh, if we received something catastrophic, weather wise, weather related, uh, that took down, um, our system, we're only a mile apart between the main, the main center and the backup center. It could easily affect both. Uh, this kit would allow us to pack up and go somewhere else. Uh, if we needed to operate out of an EOC in another county, we could do that.
Let's hope we never use it.
I.
It's good insurance.
Prepare for the worst and hope for the best.
Chairman, if I just, I just beg to comment on this, and John, from the experiential level, we, this board spent a significant amount, which I was just trying to figure out what the amount was in the emails, where I patrol both, would patrol seventeen miles or rescue a shore, significant amount of money, for very limited use. We also spend a significant amount in the IT department in terms of protecting this county against malware and every other kind of opportunity that, uh, that goes beyond our wildest imagination from our IT director when he, or CIA, when he describes it to us in the dark side. The sense of this is almost as decimal dust, and Mike, and I'll use that word because in terms of these other investments, and perhaps there's even more, because we're affecting the potential of fifty two thousand residents if our two system crashes. The thirteen counties up north, which I'm very connected to, uh, those folks are, are very much struggling, and if you've seen any of the pictures, they're just getting their fault, their poles back, it, it's a mess. I don't know if they'll ever recover, or what that recovery will be. As the chairman said, you can never use this, but if you do, this is, you would not want to be pointed out as a board passing up an opportunity that may never be used, but on the other hand, that was used, may be the saving grace between lives and other situations in the county, and that's how I looked at it. I mean, uh, I'm very concerned about the contractor, of course, but related to um, this service and what was designed to do, there's no communication once it goes down and, and if we just, here it's on a different system, Lapeer will, will all struggle. This has always been a struggle. Tuscola County uh, was the number one, as I recall, years ago, I can't even remember, two thousand something. We went step forward and created the nine eleven. Uh, we were the prototype. And other counties followed us after that, and that's sort of a legacy that we have set forward. Now, we're not here to create legacies, but we're here to protect, to protect people. I just wanted pass that on as a, as my thoughts as a, um, over the years, so that's your turn.
Okay, and, and, you know, you can hear a little commissioner, but what's a lot of that? And with Johnson, a lot of the question, that's something to get with this, after that contract, if you get that other contract, use the discussion to have again. Let's see if we've had, you know, if we use it, or.
Yeah.
Discusses moving forward, just like, to have again, but, uh, yeah, appreciate everybody's support.
Yeah, you know, we're, we're trying to be progressive, we're, we're trying to continue our public service. And this system, you know, um, I, I don't think we fully understand when something happens like up in the, in the northern lower, what kind of impact that has. And this is certainly a kit that, you know, we could have preemptively spoken with those directors up there and gotten to them so that they could continue nine one one service. So, you know, I'm not opposed to, and of course, that's at the board's discretion, I would not ever be opposed to helping out another county in an emergency situation like that. Um, you know, it's.
So even if it gets used, but then you use in this county, it, it's a win-win, what I was gonna say, but if another county would have to have it at the last bit.
Yeah, and they're, obviously, their goal is to not be on backup systems for long, but it's going to take time to get them back up and running. Um, you know, and, and quite honestly, uh, to, to be frank, you know, as director, I, I was worried about your decisions this morning, and obviously, no decision has been made just yet. But, um, you know, I, I just, we just didn't bat an eye at fifty two hundred dollars for a historic sign at a park. And, you know, my legacy cost is fifty five hundred and.
Yeah, those, those are grand, sir.
My understanding was reimbursement, so they had to spend the money, so. You know, again, this was money that I had laid out in capital outlay. It was planned to spend, but again, another agency didn't get grilled, uh, about financial decisions quite like I am.
It's just lazy, I was reasonable.
I understand.
The board looks at different things, the legacy of them.
But, uh,
Chris, you're gonna add some good points.
Oh, they absolutely did, I, I just, I don't know, uh.
And I don't think anybody's questioning the importance of it.
Fifty five hundred dollars out of my one point three million budget, it, it's not really much to bat an eye at either currently, but I appreciate the good discussion on it, certainly.
Okay. Any more discussion on the motion? All fair say aye?
Aye.
Motion is passed. Move on to number eight, the Roco Property LLC, second amendment to commercial lease agreement.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Roco Property LLC agreement be modified to reflect the updated agent's name to Meritage Management LLC as shown in the second amendment to commercial lease agreement effective April tenth, two thousand twenty five. Lease agreement changes the rent payments to be made payable to Merit Age Management LLC at four two nine North State Street, Suite one oh two Carroll, Michigan, four eight seven two three.
Sport, the move by Commissioner Cook, sport by Commissioner Biden, to move to approve that the Roco Property LLC agreement that modified to reflect the updated agent's name to Merit Management LLC as shown in the second amendment to the commercial lease agreement. Amendment to Commercial Lease Agreement, effective April tenth, two thousand twenty five. The lease agreement changes the rent payments to be made payable to Meritage Management LLC at four twenty nine North State Street, Suite, Suite one oh two Carroll, Michigan, four eight seven two three. There's most any more discussion on this? Here none, all fair say aye?
Aye.
She agrees. She agrees.
She wanted it on that vote.
Yeah. Move on to number nine, mosquito abatement department.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request of Larry Zappa, mosquito abatement director, to hire Chance Snyder to fill the open technician position for the twenty twenty five mosquito season, starting at step one rate of pay of fourteen eighty five per hour, pending fare bill, physical, drug screen and background check, tentative start date April fourteenth. Of course.
The move by Commissioner Luke, or by Commissioner Cook, the move to prove the request of Larry Zappa, mosquito abatement director, to hire Chance Snyder for the open technician position for the two twenty, twenty twenty five mosquito season, starting at step one rate of pay, fourteen dollars eighty five cents per hour. Pending a favorable physical drug screen and background check, and the start date to be April fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Any more discussion on that? Here none, all fair say aye?
Aye.
Motion been approved. Mosquito abatement department request to hire Gabriel Ramirez.
Chairman, I make a, I want to make a, make a motion, uh, move to approve the request of Larry Zapp's mosquito abatement director to hire Gabriela Ramirez to fill an open technician position for the twenty twenty five mosquito season, starting September first. Rate of fourteen dollars and eighty five cents per hour, pending a favorable physical drug screen and background check, tentative start date of April twenty first, twenty twenty five.
I'll support that.
The move by Commissioner Goodchild, or by Commissioner Cook, to move to prove the request of Larry Zappa, mosquito abatement director, hire Gabriel Ramirez to fill an open technician position for the twenty twenty five mosquito season, starting at step one, rate of pay of fourteen dollars eighty five cents per hour, pending a favorable physical drug screen, a background check, and the start date of April twenty first, twenty twenty five. Any more discussion on that? Here none, all fair say aye?
Aye.
And the motion has passed. That takes us through our own business. Move on to correspondence and resolutions. Animal shelter recognition email. Everybody have cancer?
Yeah.
That was a great email, chairman.
Those guys are doing a good job out there.
Well, uh the Parks and Recreation, the, the meetings for the Parks and Recreation permissions are in there too, gotta look at them. With that there, we'll move on to the liaison reports. The little service commissioner looks.
Oh, we do, to the Board of Health tomorrow, other than that, I don't have anything else, sir, back to you.
Mr. Goodchild, I have nothing to report this time. Mr. Birdwell?
A little bit of reports, the uh DDA met yesterday, and nothing really, the PDA uh, significant report on that, um, they did have their first farmers markets uh last Saturday, which was, I called it a wet one as they described it, but they had about two hundred people, they estimated uh go through. Um, the only other report on could be the Workers' Count Board met, um I chaired that meeting, um, particular case, there's an interim chair. But the uh most significant, I don't have all the details with me at the moment, but the most significant is that they're on track, uh for all the counties that are, which are major, if you trust the state, they're on track for a uh another significant dividend, if nothing else happens. Significant amounts of savings have been had in terms of what's been submitted in claims versus what's being paid, which if you understand the hospital system and the insurance system, um, that would come to fruition very quickly in your mind, but it would take a few minutes to explain uh why medical care is so expensive and how insurance companies uh need a liaison to negotiate those prices, not everyone can do that. Um, next meeting is uh the end of May, uh Rack is going to meet, Rack met yesterday, but I was in the uh DDA meeting, so what's your report there? No further report.
Okay. Um, I have nothing ready to report on this morning, like, Mr. Luke said that the Board of Health is tomorrow. There's nothing coming up yet, he could, he could have a development corporation, nothing new there. So we'll move on to Mr. Cook.
Uh, next Wednesday, we have a Tri-County Recycle Meeting. So I'll be attending that. Other than that, nothing to share.
Any other buildings as necessary, top of front of the board this morning?
Yeah, Commissioner Vaughn, I do, uh, on Monday, at Millington at six o'clock, they're gonna go over the renewable energy on um the solar's uh there, uh, everybody is invited. Um, it's, they're gonna do questions and answers and this kind of thing, so if you have any questions and answers on the, on that, um
Who's putting that on?
That's my answer. Steve, do you remember who's putting that on?
Will that be at the township or?
Yes, the township hall. You plan on attending, right?
I am. I'll be there.
I didn't quite get that comment, but I think I heard what I was hearing. Oh, well. I have, I have something to do.
Yes.
Alright, I don't have this out to you, and it's rather short notice, I had been so to speak, in the woods for a month, but here's uh, some Monday, or April fourteenth, at five to six thirty PM, there's a uh reception over at Bejio, supporting Representative Alexander, he's a state representative, represents of our area um as well. And um so it is Monday, April fourteenth, from five to six thirty, um and I will somehow detach this from a message to get it into an email and just send it out to you to see if it's which perhaps we should revisit at some point, bringing in
Surely. Our representatives. I was just thinking about that the last couple of years, it's time.
And Senator
Yeah.
Uh, this is an update with everything that's happening, especially with everything that's happening. Uh, no further questions.
Yeah, especially, you know, the report come out, they want to raise all the fees of fish licenses economical figures, unbelievable, you know, three, four times recent. You know, uh you gotta say, you know, hopefully I represented those for all that.
And Chairman, if you just, just to drive in this morning, I don't know, it's not rut season, but there's deer in a lot of yards, so raising the hunting, I'm just not quite sure they're, they must live in the metropolitan areas.
Yeah, I don't know what a deer is.
We're just talking about a deer license from like eleven dollars to over fifty. You know, like, you know
Over fifty?
Yeah. And, you know, they're raised from eleven to thirteen, or like they were, you know, and the senior citizens, oh, so young boy, that's all we have to, senior citizens. Uh, she needs the firm, the budget she's presented, she needs that money.
No tags are only five dollars.
Uh?
No tags are only five dollars.
I read it just the other day, uh, prices of what they are, what the, what the, she proposed them to go to. It was yeah, yeah, it hasn't, hasn't went through the house or nothing yet, but that's what she's proposing to go through.
And Chairman, just, these weren't live deer, standing in the yard, these are dead deer.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, extended public comment. Everybody want to address the board this morning?
Michael Kleinsmith, um, I thank you for your, your votes today, have a couple of additional items, just that I kind of see here, so I see under um Mr. Good, Good Child's list, you have Tuscula twenty twenty listed, so I understand he was on that board like for a year or so, that they um disbanded the board last year after they looked like they lost their tax exemption, so just kind of wanted to give you an update on that, so I don't think that board's functioning anymore. Um, the other thing is that, there was mention about these um fiber optics and getting good energy, and I was contacted last year when I was still part of the EDC by a group that wanted to get some information out there on that, and there's a couple of things that I kind of found out, uh, researching, uh, things there, because I live in an area that's currently underserved, um that we don't have fiber optic um in our area, so it's, we have kind of, go through the satellite, which is a lot slower, um even though on the county website, it says that we're an area that has fiber optic, and my dad went to a few meetings where um I think it was um, Subelectric has put in a lot of the fiber optic that we have in the county, and he went there to one master township, but they had a meeting, and he said that, he gave the impression that a lot of these um fiber optic companies kind of bought up certain areas, I think maybe probably having to do with these grants, and there's some areas that they put in there, like with Subelectric, um, but then there's certain areas that other companies bought up, but then you don't hear anything from them, and they can't get any internet in there, so um, so if it just, because it's kind of tangentially related to the question that kind of came up there, if people are asking for money, or they want your support for these grants there, that you would want to have some um companies that would actually put the stuff in there and not just buy up certain areas and then not actually put it in, so because that seems like maybe that's kind of what happened in, in the past, or something kind of happened like that, so so that's just a couple of comments that I and so
Thank you, that was If I may, comment on it, you know, Michael, I was, I saw that, um we had a discussion on it a while back, but I was surprised when, when, I was thinking that earlier, but I thought, now I'll go through that. That it's interesting, they bought up these areas like that they're, they're, they're districts or something, and uh you, you think you could just go anywhere um as a provider, offer it if it's economical, whatever. But if that map was shown, it might have been shown in here at one time, I'm not sure, if it was shown, you would see it's been parceled up by different, like some of the companies, I don't not like use TEC, but I mean, they were listening. And uh, that's, that's the problem, they don't allow anybody else in. I don't know how that works, but that's what you're saying. And you have an underserved area which is sort of covered by
Like they did that, yeah, I don't
Some time ago, I don't know, it's just a phenomenon that not most people would even consider or think about because you think that all the ads you get, you know, put an antenna on, but this is high speed and that's the that's the issue. I just want to comment.
Anyone, anyone still have a public comment to point?
Yeah, uh, Matthew Beerline will be at uh Wisner Township Hall today at twelve PM, if anyone wants to go.
What hall?
Wisner Township Hall. At what, my area, at one, yeah. It'll be one, twelve to one, I think.
Yes, Ian Lee.
Um to address some of the things that Mr. Kleinsmith has said, uh, Tuscula County does not have a website that provides connectivity or or declare any sort of connectivity, other companies do. We have links to MyHi, which is um Michigan's high-speed company or uh division. Um, under their website, under Michigan dot com, this is the BEAD application process. If you do see a service area that says we have high-speed internet and you don't get it, like, much like he would say, there is a challenge uh form that you can fill out to say, hey, we're listed as having high-speed internet access, but we definitely don't. So there's a challenge process in there. And under this BEAD program, there are rules and stipulations that say if the company is funded for a, a project in an area, they have X amount of time to install and deliver that internet. And I believe it's a matter of seventy two hours from the moment that they receive the funding and a request from you for internet, they have to deliver the internet within that amount of time. So it's important that we do get these projects funded and out there, uh, whether we're talking about other projects, that's a, that's a differentiation that we need to make. Um, BEAD hasn't been awarded throughout the state yet, some projects have, so if they're buying up areas, it could be under different terms, different projects, but under BEAD, um, they have to fulfill that, that agreement in X amount of time, or they're in violation and they'll lose their, their, their funding, so that's why you see Subelectric, um, Agro Valley, really scaling up operations with all these trucks and all these fiber optics is because from the time, if they receive this funding, they have to roll the trucks, they have to install it in X amount of time, so you're not gonna see them sitting there waiting like they used to. But if you have any more questions on that, please visit uh Michigan dot com slash LEO. Um, there's a lot of information on the BEAD program and how that actually works, so um, you got, you got good information there instead of misinformation.
Thanks, Eddie.
Thank you.
Hello again, commissioners. Um, I just am very proud of something, and I wanted to share that with you, um, I just am getting back from conference with the United County Officers Association, and a few years ago, I um gained enough training and certification hours in order to earn what's called the Certified County Officer Certificate, and that would be equivalent to a bachelor's degree in the number of hours required. And um this week, I, on Tuesday, I was awarded my Master Certified County Officer, which means I completed an additional sixty hours of training um with the Ad Association, and so I'm very proud of that accomplishment, and I just wanted to let you know. And that's where I was on Monday, so I am, um, sorry, I missed the meeting, I tried to virtual in as I was attending class, I had my AirPod on and was trying to listen as well, but um it is something that's, takes some time because we only hold those conferences um, you know, twice a year, so it is something that I'm very proud of. I also am now the immediate past president of the United County Officers Association, so I was awarded that award as well for my two-year presidency term, it's a very good association, was originally um began with a grant from the Kellogg Center in partnership with Michigan State University, and that is how our training um hours were calculated in in being able to gain this. Um, I believe the last county elected official that would have obtained this would have been back in Jenny McLaren. Um, Jenny was very active in that association as well, so just something that we're very proud of. Um, today I do have a meeting with all of the township and city clerks, um, Michelle Hicks from Tuscula Township has um arranged the opportunity to have um a township attorney come in and speak to them on the changes coming to the sick time, that act that was just recently, there's a lot of complications and it affects our townships and our cities, as well as even into elections with our election inspectors, because they will um be affected by that as well, and some of my township clerks are getting um a little pushback from their boards stating, oh, that doesn't apply to us, and so we are very thankful that we are able to have this attorney come in and provide some education, so um, you know, we meet a lot on a monthly, we meet every month, my clerks and myself, um, a lot of it in the past has been focused on elections, and it's good to be able to do some training on something else, so um just wanted to let you know that your clerks are, most of the clerks in the county are gonna be able to attend and participate, and um it's free to our townships and cities, um Tuscula Township has been able to arrange that so that there's no cost to our locals, so I'm very appreciative of that. So, thank you.
Congratulations, George. Did you, did you virtual on Monday?
Yes.
And yet you could not stick up for the board chair, it'll be
Well, I really wanted to, but I was in
I got a head up here.
I was, I was chuckling.
Chairman? Yeah, Mr. Birdwell, have you heard anything more about the Amish in fifty-three corridor and any of that stuff? About the bridge and
Sort of half, and it's really interesting, I was just talking to John about it and trying to start out, which I did send to the email. It's a uh, it's something, uh, I mean, perhaps I'll send it as well, uh, I received a copy of an Amish person driver killed up north. Vehicle passed a school bus, didn't see him. Smashed into him, and for whatever reason, uh, in the comments, if you can read the comments, and it's basically um the driver was not charged, and that was a significant issue uh in terms of everything we know. The driver was not charged, and that was a significant issue uh, in terms of everything we know about running into somebody and passing a school bus, but needless to say, I did send that to uh, Representative Alexander. It's been a very slow, I'm not sure if he's gaining traction, I'm not sure what traction he's given it, he and Austin, it's been a must be three years. I'm encouraging him to set up another meeting before it gets busy, the Amish community is with them, he's had two meetings with them, and he needs to get back to them to um, give them an update. Someone's gonna get killed on fifty-three, it's just a matter of time, there's many close calls. And all they're asking is egress, which they have mapped it out, as you know, but to cross the Cass River. Um, because between Cassidy Road and I don't know, probably Deccerville, they're very limited up one side or the other, and the communities are on both sides. So they have to travel down the side. So with that, they've even proposed that uh, there's Amish bridge builders, they've, they've submitted that they would build it, no cost. But when you get into with this D N R, which is refused, has no interest in it, in Castle, the Cassidy D N R officer anyway, whoever runs that, as well as Eagle and others, it's, I don't know what, what Greg's Representative Alexander's faced with. But if there's any traction that any of you wanna put pressure on, I'll certainly uh, get with me and we will continue to do that, because uh, such a small remedy for a potential issue. Um, and nobody wants to see anyone meet through the mines on fifty-three, and if you, if you do use fifty-three, you will notice um the traffic, you will notice the inattentive drivers, you'll notice that they don't even move over if they could. Um, and there's a lot of issues with that, so I guess I'm summing it up in a way of the frustration. In my last email, Nancy Barrios and I had been working on this together in Cassidy. Uh, she had a tremendous amount of support from the community, individuals and businesses, they recognized the issue, obviously the Amish are significant to the community, so um. But it's fallen off, it's fallen off the visibility.
Well, that's what made me think about it, cause that, that wreck they had up north there. And that, and put back in my mind, yeah, you know, we haven't heard anything about that over here, just a matter of time.
And this was a single fatality, normally when you see this happen, um. The buggies hold the families. And that's, I mean, the carts, buggies, and then you have the, the family buggies, and it's just um, something we should all be thinking about, and if there's any traction, again, I'm, I'm willing, that's why Chairman Vaughn was thinking that he might wanna be the first one to invite to address the board, because this is something that needs to be taken care of. Needs to be, they, he needs to make a decision, a timeline to allow that committee to know. Uh, cause they have really no options and.
Right.
Yeah, so there's a sort of a circular upgrade on what's happening.
Any more public comment from anybody uh, on virtual or? Let the record show that public comment was offered, and we had Ian, and he had a, that was her credit. And with that, we'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting this morning. We want to thank everybody for joining us this morning, and uh, the move by Commissioner Cook, supported by Commissioner Barlow. So Jared, the commission to be in this morning with that. We stand as you.
That'd have been a lot faster if we'd have done a consent agenda, so. They dragging you into it.
On the call, the order, the statutory finance person in the meeting this morning. And with that said, we'll have a public comment at the end of this meeting, if anybody wants to adjust the board on statutory finance, you can do that at that time. Uh, we'll take a real call by uh, Alfred Credit.
Thank you, commissioners. Commissioner Goodchild.
Here.
Commissioner Barba.
Here.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Here.
Commissioner Lu.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
You have a quorum, you may proceed.
Thank you. Action on previous mini minutes.
Mr. Chair, uh, make a motion to the action of previous mini, meeting minutes, statutory finance of March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five. Or.
The move by Commissioner, board by Commissioner Cook, to approve the action of the previous mini minutes of statutory finance, twenty-seventh of March, two thousand twenty-five. Any more discussion on that? Hearing none, all fair say aye?
Aye.
This is approved. Move on to new business, the review and approval of the finance report and checks.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to review and approval of financial report and checks for ten, two thousand twenty-five finance docket.
Sport, the move by Commissioner Cook, supported by Commissioner Barlow, to review and approval of the finance report and checks for that's ten twenty-five financial docket. As the motion, any more discussion? Hearing none, all fair say aye?
Aye.
Motion been approved. Review and approval of the daily report and checks.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to the review and approval of the daily docket, report and checks of four ten twenty-five daily docket.
For, the move by Commissioner Lu, supported by Commissioner Cook, to review and approval of the daily report and checks for ten twenty-five daily docket. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all fair say aye?
Aye.
Been approved. Review and approval of the per day report and checks.
There isn't.
There shouldn't be any.
I don't think there is any.
That'll be the end of the month.
So, yes. I don't see nothing on our old business. Do we have any public comment that anybody wants to comment on the statutory part of the meeting this morning? If you do, you can do that at this point. Anybody wanna comment on the statutory finance meeting this morning? Hearing none, let the record show that public comment was offered, that they had none, and with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, sport.
The move by Commissioner Lu, supported by Commissioner Cook, to adjourn the statutory finance meeting this morning, that. Stayed adjourned.